Trump.
And there.
Oh, it was brutal.
Yeah, it is. It's a young man's game. Everybody young man.
Yeah, yeah. Me either.
We think that, we think that area right there is probably the best. Just, well, just because of the, it's so centrally located and you get to everything.
Oh, and it's crazy.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it is really.
Yeah.
It's a little southeast of Oaxaca, so that way, so. No, that's a great little neighborhood down there.
There's gonna be questions. I was thinking, you never know. I get it.
You all set, Mike? Thanks. Mr. Retres, come on in. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Today is Monday, September ninth, 2024, and welcome to the Eden Prairie Planning Commission Meeting. I'd like to call it to order. First item is let's stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, I note that everybody is here, all the commissioners are here, except for Commissioner Piper, who is absent. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, does anybody have any comments on tonight's agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Moved by Commissioner Taylor, second of any anybody?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Weber. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes unanimously. Second item is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. It's the meeting held Monday, August twenty-sixth, 2024. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. So move. Thank you, Commissioner Grody, got a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirk. All in favor, say aye.
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 Closed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. This evening, we have two public hearings on our agenda, and our public hearings run that will give the applicant an opportunity to come to the podium and address our commission first, explain the project, then we'll have a staff report, then I'll open it up to general public comments or questions if anybody in the audience wants to come forward with those before our commission deliberates on the issue. So, our first public hearing is the Wonderlic Malick Building Addition. This is a request for PUD concept review on five point one-three acres, PUD district review with waivers on five point one-three acres, and a site plan review on five point one-three acres. Is the applicant here and would they like to come forward to address our commission? Thank you, welcome, and please state your name, company, and address, please.
Good evening. I am Amy Schwabe with TWP Architects.
My name is Neil Wonderlic. I'm owner of the property. It's owned by Wonderlic Properties, and then, of course, Wonderlic Malick is, I'm the same guy on that part, too.
Your name gave it away. Okay, thank you, welcome.
Thank you for having us. Oh.
Should I go sit down?
Um, if you like.
No, no, it's okay.
Okay. We can do without slides, too, if that. Sure, sure. Okay, so this project is an existing industrial zone building, and my client would like to do an expansion of close to eight thousand square feet to help their business operations flow. And we were looking, going toward the east of the building because in the original nineteen ninety-three development agreement, that was a space that was, they were able, able to go out there, it was approved at that time. We talked with the planning staff and determined with them that that was not ideal, it would be taking a lot of heritage trees out from the site. So, Wonderlic decided to go up instead of out. So, this will house their engineering staff to be directly over the manufacturer, manufacturing area and linking to the existing, there we go, existing, um, business office, which is currently a second floor on the other side of the building. Do you want me to talk about Wonderlic Malick, or would you like to?
Okay, yeah, it's, um, I started the company.
Speak up to the microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right, thank you.
Sorry, I started the company by myself in nineteen eighty-one. I was the only employee for a couple of years, and I didn't really have any idea of how much our company was going to grow and expand in the United States, but right now, we are in thirty-five cities in twenty-three states. We went from one employee to over six hundred employees right now across the country, have about a hundred and forty here in Minnesota. We have an office in St. Paul also that does mechanical engineering and architectural engineering, architectural work. We, our, our business is engineering, but we got into the fabrication business because clients wanted us to build things. So, we build control panels, think that you can most relate to is like, you guys have lift stations, pumping, you know, lift, lift, the control panel that goes in that lift station, we have a group, we call them our environmental group, and they do the work in designing those panels for the lift stations, working with envi, uh, like Westwood and, and people like that in the, in the environmental space, so. But, right now, we, we have a, quite a bit of business for our fabrication people in the, in the, in there, so we've already taken out some people and moved them, stuffed them in the building in another place, and we've been using the large, it's part of that area now for warehousing and storage because we have to, we get a lot of equipment ahead of time, mostly because of supply chain issues and things like that. So, right now, we want to, uh, expand that so we have more storage area, maybe a couple more workstations in this expanded space, and then we need to put the people back that we've made go away for a little while, so. And it's important that we keep all our people together because they work together. We think this is the best and safest way to do it, that we don't have our people going through the shop to get to their offices or anything like that, so it's, we think it's the best solution and it keeps everybody all together. And one thing I did, do want to just throw out real quick is that, I don't own the company anymore, we're a hundred percent employee-owned company, ESOP, as they call them, so, if you have any questions later on. I also have company brochures I brought with me, if you're interested, I can hand those out, and you can take a little bit more look at what we do.
Thank you. So, what this expansion is doing, like Neil said, is giving the business the, the added capacity that they can keep up with their orders. So, we're looking at the existing site plan here. Nothing is really changing with the site, we will add some additional landscaping, twenty-five caliper inches to be commensurate with the three hundred and twenty square feet per caliper inch with your code, and, um, nothing else with the access or parking, we're hoping, changes. So, this in red is where the, the expansion is going on the second floor. This is the footprint, it's really light around there, but the two stories up to the north of that expansion, and then the little, um, link is the link between the two office spaces. So, here we see an existing floor plan that read just a space planning diagram for you to, to imagine what's happening here. The second plan, the proposed plan, is where this expansion, so it's seventy-six, fifty, and then another four hundred square feet for the link. And then, there's a little bit of reconfiguration down on the first floor where there was more office space that will reduce for those people that are going upstairs, and warehouse and manufacturing space, so the, the blue is the warehouse and storage, and green is the manufacturing. This proposed expansion will be fifty, about fifty-six thousand and a half square feet, will match the existing materials, so we're just taking that, that facade and bringing it up, and the fenestrations matching the same on that side. Floor area ratio, we're way better than what the, the max of fifty percent is, so we're still doing well there. The forty-foot height limitation is still maintained, will be thirty-three feet with this addition. And then, we talked about those landscaping requirements, so it makes for twenty-five caliper inches that we will add to the project. So, parking calculations, this is where we're looking for a waiver. That development agreement gave us fifty thousand square feet with that additional twenty thousand approved, we're well below that. We talked about taking those existing trees, not, not taking them out, and they had a parking deck that would accommodate lost parking spots if they did that addition, but we're not looking at that. And the original parking lot was only built to ninety-eight stalls. So, Wonderlic Malick had added thirty-eight stalls, you can see outlined and read at the southwest side of the site, that gave them a, a total of a hundred and thirty-six stalls, and they have been operating with those a hundred and thirty-six stalls since twenty fifteen, and no problems at all with this. If you went by the square footage calculations, we would need a hundred and eighty-seven stalls. But, if you looked at the existing footprint, you would have needed a hundred and sixty-seven, which the, the site never had, and it's operated fine on this. There was a, a traffic memo, memo done, and there's no impact to the intersections or nearby roadways on this. And actually, we'll go back with this waiver, so how we approach this is saying, by square footage, the total square footage, we would need a hundred and eighty-seven stalls. We have a hundred and thirty-six. If you actually looked at people, workspaces, stations, there are about a hundred and sixty-one people occupying this building, but Wonderlic Malick does have a, a three-day work from home, so working from home three days, two in the office, and if you implement that, that's about sixty percent, so that would be a hundred and eight people that you could really expect to be in the building, and well below the a hundred and thirty-six that are already there. So, in summary, we're less intensive than that approved twenty thousand square feet at eight, about eight thousand. We're well within the forty-foot height limitation. This nineteen ninety-three agreement had contemplated tree loss, we contemplate no tree loss, which I know is very important to your city plan. We request a PUD waiver to allow for the parking differentiation. We're not expected to impact traffic patterns or roadways, excuse me, and exterior facade materials should be consistent with what is already there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, I appreciate it. Commissioners, do you have any initial questions of the applicant before we move on to the staff report? Thanks, stay poised, appreciate it, you can sit alone. Yep, thank you. Jeremy, would you like to take us through the staff report, please?
Yeah, I have a very brief staff report today. As, as mentioned by the applicant, the building addition, materials, height, floor ratio, all comply with the city code. The expansion of the, of the business up reduced or eliminated requirement for additional stormwater management on the site, which would have been disruptive to either the parking lot or the existing trees, and the applicant said, made a strong effort to reduce impact to the, to the existing vegetation, in particular, their vegetation to the east of the project. And so, for that, the, the, this addition seems best appropriate, given, given kind of constraints of the site. Mentioned earlier, the, the waiver from, from the parking requirement, note that there are a hundred and thirty-six parking spaces on site, they would need a hundred and eighty-seven, so there, there's a fifty or so unit kind of waiver from the parking requirement. Staff is supporting that waiver. In this situation, the, the business need does not meet the, or is not consistent with what our, our written prescription is in terms of parking requirements, and the, the business is, is doing a, a great job of managing the parking requirements on site, there's not a lot of opportunity to, to go beyond the site in terms of parking, and so, they have to main, manage the parking in that respect. So, staff is supporting the waiver here, recognizing that the original PUD for the property did identify, as the applicant mentioned, a larger expansion south of the building, and then a, a large parking deck. Those, those are still on, you know, in the development agreement, those are still, could be solutions in the future if necessary, but based on the, the scope of this project, they're not necessary at this stage, and we do support a waiver. With that, staff is recommending approval subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff at this time? Okay, Jeremy, just a quick follow-up on your comment that you just made about the development agreement having an opportunity for growth with a building addition and a parking deck, if they have more workers or, what I'm interested in is, if the building changes hands, does that development agreement travel with the building sale?
The, the development agreement travels with the property, so whoever owns it can pick up the, the development agreement and, and operate under those conditions, and if then the future additional parking is required, we'd be looking likely for a substantial parking would be required, we'd be looking at a, a parking deck or parking ramp.
Sure, okay, thank you. And one last question, this abouts the city of Minnetoka, are there any special issues or coordination items that we need to do with the city of Minnetoka?
There certainly was to the property to the west, you know, from a location of driveway connections and, and utility connections. We don't see that here because the existing connections for water and sewer and, and traffic will be maintained, but they were involved in our review process, and we look for any comments that they have, both now and in the future if we have any in the land alteration permit stage.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Taylor.
And it's, Jeremy, I was out there today taking a look at the, the property, and it's, it's separate from the, the building or the second floor, but I noticed that the trash bins on the east side of the property, they're not covered or have any type of structure around them. I thought that we had some type of parameters in place when it comes to containing kind of trash bins and so on.
You're, you're correct. Current code requires trash, trash receptacles to be either, either located within the building or within an enclosure with a roof. Based on the site plans provided, we did not identify that as a requirement here, but you could suggest that if necessary.
Yes, I'd recommend that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, a couple.
Commissioner Duncan.
Thoughts? So, I echo some of the questions that you had as well. I'm, I'm questioning, though, the PUD, does that run with, that runs with the property? Does it ever expire?
PUD does run with the land, it does not expire unless it's acted on and the city has the right, I believe, forget the exact wording, but has the right to initiate the rescinding of that zone change, essentially, it's a zone change. In practice, I don't believe we do that very frequently.
Okay, thank you. And then, one other question, or maybe it's more of a comment. The applicant mentioned there was a hundred and sixty-one employees, and there's a hundred and thirty-six stalls. However, they had indicated they've been operating since two thousand and fifteen, is, has that one hundred, and I guess maybe is more of a question, the hundred and sixty-one employees, have they been since two thousand and fifteen, or have you had a hundred and sixty-one employees at that facility since two thousand and fifteen and have operated?
There's been, there's about a hundred and forty people. Can you go to the counter?
I apologize for not asking you that earlier.
No, I, I think the, the count is about a hundred and forty people in Minneapolis, or in, sorry, Eden Prairie office, and then we have a bunch of people in, it used to be in downtown St. Paul, they now are in Roseville?
Oakdale.
Oakdale, sorry. And, but on an, we have an in-house board that tracks all the people, and I, and most days, the most I've ever counted in the office, at one time, is a hundred. That's the most. Most days are less than that. We, the kind of work we do, a lot of our people travel a lot and go to project sites. Actually, we're having a, we're part, part of, going to be part of a very large project in Ro, in Rosemont called Meta, and those people will be on site for almost two years. They won't be in the office, they'll be at the project site. We also have something going on with Seagate, again, people will be at the site all the time, we do work for General Mills, those people work at James Ford Bell every day, like, so it's, that's why, you know, when I say there's a hundred and forty people here in Eden Prairie, it's about a hundred and forty, there's usually less than a hundred people in the office, and that's a maximum, most days, it's probably eighty, seventy. There's always a lot of empty parking spots.
Okay, thank you, I think that answers the question about how many employees you have at this site specifically. Absolutely.
And the hundred and sixty-one was me being very analytical, looking at what kind of space desks we have in the plan, so that was probably a little bit of a, a heavy hand on that.
Sure, I appreciate that.
I, I inferred your question, Commissioner Duncan, to be kind of a pre-COVID question, since two thousand and fifteen to twenty twenty?
Yeah, and, and apologies for not clarifying, I think my, just, my concern was about the number of parking stalls that are there, which is a hundred and thirty-six, and you had mentioned they have never been a problem since two thousand and fifteen, has the employee base grown from two thousand and fifteen until the present? And I understand that, that, that you only have about a hundred and forty at this facility, so I'm.
Just kind of a real quick thing, when, when I acquired the building, they had a dotted, those, the spaces we added, like, what, eighteen, or how many did we add? You, you mentioned it. Anyway, they had them dotted in on the drawings that I got, because when Opus built the building for a company called Viromed, and the reason we added all those parking spots is, one winter, it was a lot of snow, and because of all the snow, we were having some issues sometimes with finding enough parking places, so that's why we added that extra area to, to deal with the winter mostly.
Sure, thank you for that clarification, and what a great story, this is a very good story of Minnesota homegrown business expansion, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. So, Commissioners, any more questions of staff at this point in time before we move on to the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing, if anybody in the audience wishes to address our commission, now would be the time. Seeing nobody, I would entertain a motion from our commissioners to close the public hearing.
I move to be closed the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Sherwood, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Grody, I'll give that one to you. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 Closed. Public hearing is closed. Okay. Comments, reactions, thoughts, questions?
Just comments, I moved here in nineteen seventy-six as a young buck engineer, couldn't even spell engineer, but I remember you're starting your firm, and I'm happy to see the growth and progress, I think this is a fabulous opportunity for the city and for yourself, and for our people here in Eden Prairie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sherwood.
I agree, I appreciate the expansion without adding parking, frankly, so, good job.
And I'll add to that, and respect for the, the natural landscape around, finding a way to do it without impacting the trees, it's a beautiful area up there, and, and also, congratulations on a successful business.
Yeah, I just echo, great, great story, good project.
I agree with all those comments as well. This sounds like it's moving in a favorable direction, would anybody be interested in making a motion?
I would move to recommend approval for planned unit development concept review, planned unit development district review with waivers, and site plan review, all on five point one-three acres, as represented in the September ninth, twenty twenty-four staff report, subject to the conditions listed in that staff report.
Thank you for the motion, Commissioner Weber, would anybody like to?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirk, thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, good luck on your project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. We have a second item for a public hearing also this evening, it's our Costco fuel expansion project, they're asking for a PUD amendment with waivers on eighteen acres and site plan review on eighteen acres. See the applicants here, would you like to make a short presentation to the commission?
Good evening, commission members, my name is Julie Anderson with Bark Housing Consulting Engineers located in Kent, Washington. With me is our team consisting of Kayleen Burnett, real estate manager with Costco Wholesale, and Chris Teesler, transportation engineer with Kittleson and Associates. As you mentioned, Costco's requesting a PUD amendment and a minor site plan and architectural design review to allow for the expansion of the existing Costco fuel facility. The project includes the expansion of the existing facility, and the project area generally consists of the queue area of the existing facility and the eastern portion of the existing facility, and the intent of the project is to reduce vehicle queues, improve overall site circulation, and improve the member fueling experience. As I mentioned, the project areas in the northern portion of the site, again, focused on the queue area and the eastern portion of the existing facility. The existing facility contains eight dispensers, three twenty-thousand gallon gasoline underground storage tanks with one fifteen-hundred gallon fuel additive underground storage tank, and approximately thirty-eight hundred square foot canopy over those dispensers, and what we call an inside fuel drop lane, which basically just means when the fuel drop, this fuel truck is delivering fuel to the site, it's located inside of the queue, under existing conditions. With the expansion, we'll be adding seven new dispensers, and the installation of one new thirty-thousand gallon underground storage tank to serve the added dispensers, approximately fifty-three hundred square foot canopy expansion, an outside fuel drop lane, which allows the fuel truck to deliver fuel to the site without entering the queue, a new controller enclosure, and the widening of the eastern driveway to the site. The expansion and the signage are designed to match the existing canopy design, to provide a seamless transition, and includes brick veneer canopy columns with a tan metal canopy fascia. The fuel facility design will continue to be consistent with the existing warehouse and overall surrounding area. The controller enclosure is also designed to match the existing enclosure and canopy, and includes three toned brick walls to continue the seamless and cohesive design for the site. A traffic analysis was performed to evaluate the impacts of the expansion, key findings include that there is a small net increase in traffic, largely driven by induced demand, so shorter lines will attract more members who today may not choose to get gas, but all study intersections are forecasted to continue to operate acceptably. The expansion is projected to reduce current queues and wait times by roughly fifty percent. On the screen, we've got a graphic that shows the existing queues on the bottom, and the anticipated queues after the expansion on the top during peak Saturday hours. And there have already been several recent transportation improvements by both city and Costco. There's a new traffic signal installed at the western driveway, Technology Drive was restriped with new turn lanes added, and the west driveway was also restriped to provide separate left and right turn lanes at the signal. Overall, the study confirmed that the project will not have any adverse impacts from a traffic or transportation perspective. The fuel facility will continue to operate consistent with the existing facility, there will always be an attendant on site during operational hours, the facility will continue to only be available for member use, and a red light, green light system will be provided on the face of each front column to notify members waiting in queue when a dispenser is available. This concludes our presentation, as well as the rest of the team are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, appreciate the. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Appreciate the presentation. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant at this early stage?
I just have one comment. Thank you for showing the, the queue. That was one question that I actually had. So thank you for showing that representation.
Great. I was a little surprised to see the, the existing queue where the cars only come in from the west instead of from the east. Is that a restriction on the site now?
I don't know if it's an existing restriction.
It's been in place for a while. Yep. Chair and Commissioners, so that was in place when they started backing up into Tech Drive from that short distance.
Yep.
So they put in the barrier there, and Chris and I worked on that with them as a, kind of an option for that. And since there's been a reduction in that kind of demand in that site, I've seen that actually go away. So, just like you see in some of these proposed plans, there's a, there's a cable there that could be there in place.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm guessing it's the ability to move it in and out when they want. But right now, it's actually gone. So I think just because the new Costco that's to the west has taken some of the, the fuel demand, they didn't see a need to that, to, for that to be there. So it's actually gone since the last, last couple of weeks.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Mr. Bernhard, you want to take us through the staff report, please?
Yeah, excuse me. Briefly, the, the additional pumps and control building and expansion of the, of the canopy, that improvement will re, result in a loss of about 16 parking spaces. That's typically one of the things we look at when we look at expansions of existing buildings, what the parking demand. In this situation, 16 spaces will be removed. However, Costco exceeds the parking requirements for the size of their building. Additionally, they have put together an exhibit showing kind of where they would still snow store, store, snow during the winter. And those locations, even if those are all full of snow, they still exceed the, the code requirement from a parking perspective. So parking is not a requested waiver here. It's just something we always examine because as anyone who's been to Costco, usually parking lots pretty well full. They are requesting a waiver from the eastern driveway width. Code requires a 30-foot maximum width. A previous waiver has been granted for a 37-foot wide parking or entrance drive. They're asking for a 46-foot width, and that accommodates the truck traffic coming in and also a left and a right dedicated lane. So staff is supporting of that. It helps the, the flow of traffic onto Tech, Tech Drive. As the applicant mentioned, the addition is consistent with the design of the Costco building itself, so should blend in seamlessly. And we see that as an improvement. Staff is supporting of the site plan and recommends approval of the waiver as drafted, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff at this point?
Mr. Chair, I have two.
Commissioner Duncan.
One question, the PUD. Is there a timeline for the previous PUD waivers to be implemented? Or if, if they don't implement them?
They, similar to the question from the last meeting, they're, they continue throughout unless the council makes an action to rescind them.
Okay.
We have not felt the need to do that. And so they could, i- if this approval wasn't granted, they could build the four additional stations that they got approval for some years ago. They're electing to amend that approval essentially and, and, and add these additional dispensers. So they do not expire if they don't be acted on unless an action is taken.
Thank you. One other question is around EV charging stations. I should know this because I'm there on the regular, but are there any current EV charging stations there? Or is there any plan for any EV charging stations at some point?
I don't recall any, but I defer that to the applicant.
Currently, there is not any EV charging stations at the site, and to my knowledge, there is not a current plan to provide any for the site.
Okay, thank you. We don't have a requirement for that at this point.
Not based on this application, no.
Very good. Thank you.
Just a comment. Back to the discussions we had at the previous request for expansion, we brought up the EV, and more on a visibility standpoint, we brought up the point about EV charging, the potential for it. So it, it had been discussed, but at the time, it just didn't seem the, the technology and momentum, all of that wasn't, wasn't there for it. So the, the commission didn't take any specific action relative to that.
Sure. Thank you. Jeremy, or maybe Mr. Schultz, I noticed on the planners that the applicant isn't going to be painting a crosswalk across the widened east driveway. There is such a crosswalk on the west driveway, which is signalized, of course. And I'm thinking if this one is even wider, ought there be some dedicated access aisle visually and potentially even a safety island halfway across for someone maybe with slower mobility? It seems like quite a busy intersection and uncontrolled with, with stoplights.
Chair and Commissioners, yeah, I see that that's not included. It was included with the signal because, as you mentioned, that was part of that, that, that plan to have that, that striped. We don't typically require striping at parking lot entrances. We do at streets. We look at, we have a whole process where we look at a required striping and signage for that. It would be at their choice if they were to do that. Again, with the refuge island need, that's more from a, an ability for someone to go across a couple lanes and stop. Look at traffic, which in this case, we're expecting this to be slow. There's a stop bar there on the exit, so that was where they would stop. Typically, that, that striping kind of acts as a stop bar as well, but they have that included in here. So we didn't really see a need for another refuge island, which would then widen the driveway even further.
Okay. So forgetting the, that safety island halfway through, who would suggest that best practice in implementation of a crosswalk? Would it be the traffic engineer who did the traffic study, or would it be city staff?
It, it could be both. Yep. But again, I, it wouldn't be a city necessarily like requirement to do that.
Okay.
Just because we're typically looking at that at, at street intersections, not parking lot entrances.
Okay. Just want to make sure our citizens are safe here.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question.
Yes, Commissioner Duncan.
That discussion made me think about it. With the widening of the, and this is for the city engineer, with the widening of that east entrance, did, does the turn lane, is that affected at all? Is that lengthened, or there, there's no need to adjust the turn lane because?
There isn't. There isn't, no. The curb was adjusted mainly for the fuel truck turning radius. That was, that was designed, and also why that's small median is in between those, but the turn lane itself is not being moved at all.
Okay, thank you.
Or nee, or necessary to be moved.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And Jeremy, some of us remember an application about four years ago when they intended to expand, I don't know if it was to this scope or not. I could have asked the applicant. I forgot. Do you know the reason why they didn't proceed with that particular expansion and waited until now?
I don't know the specific reason, but I know that it was approved, you know, four years ago. It was a smaller scope of a project.
Sure, sure. Okay. Just out of curiosity, if, if the applicant has a response to that?
Sure. So back when we were here before with the four dispenser expansion, that was pre-COVID times. So once COVID hit, the project kind of went on hold, you know, indefinitely until things started to resume back to normal. And that time, Costco kind of reevaluated to make sure the scope of the work made sense for the site. You know, market changes, things happened post-pandemic that, you know, couldn't have been anticipated. And so as part of that analysis, they determined that they, you know, felt that they needed a bigger expansion, which is why we came back today for, I think, three additional dispensers.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Again, this is a public hearing, and so I'd like to invite anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item to step Seeing none, I'll take a, a motion from a commissioner to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Grody. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thoughts and comments from the Commissioners?
Well, as one who was here for that four-year-ago session and, and discussion, I think this is a, actually, I think it's a, a positive expansion for Eden Prairie. I don't, I don't know about the rest of you guys, but my, my Costco membership is justified by the fueling facility. And I'm about 90% of the gas I buy is there. And, and anything that can be done to decrease the wait times is, is a positive. And I think it's in a, where it is in the city relative to traffic, relative to a lot of different things, I think it's a good location. So I'm, I'm very supportive of this, of this expansion.
Okay, thank you.
I, I agree. As one of the ones that doesn't wait in the lines because too impatient, more, more dispensers is better. So, thank you.
That's good. I was initially skeptical about the reduced queue length when we seemed to be shortening the queue dimension and adding more pumps. It just intuitively wasn't there. But then I did see that red light, green light feature that you're deploying on the project, which is like a parking ramp. I don't know if Mall of America has that, but I've seen it at busy parking ramps. And I think that'll really improve the navigation for the customer to shimmy on up to those empty dispensers, in my opinion. So I, I can see how that would work out to your benefit as well.
Yeah, I agree as well. Those indicator lights are a huge help for cars that are lower. Not everyone has the big SUVs like most of us like to drive. So, you know, it's a little safer having that look over your shoulder and whatnot. So I think it's a great, great addition. I'll probably go there more now.
It's good, it's good. All right, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kirk.
Move to recommend approval for planned unit, planned unit amendment with waivers and site plan review on 18 acres, as represented in the September 9, 2024 staff report, subject to conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you. Have a motion on the table for Commissioner Kurt.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner, sorry, Duncan. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion pass, passes unanimously. Congratulations, and good luck with your Okay, those are our two public hearings. Do we have a planner's report this evening, Mr. Bernhard?
Not tonight.
All right. Commissioners, do we have any members' reports that you want to share? Nope. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicely done.
Easy ones.